Don't you know you radiate like the sun? We can feel your fire, fire. Don't you know you radiate like the sun? The heat will take us higher, higher. Don't you know you radiate like the sun? We can feel your fire, fire. Don't you know you radiate like the sun? The heat will take us higher, higher. You're radiant. Oh, 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 oh. Oh, 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 oh. You're radiant. Oh, 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 oh. You're radiant. Oh, 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 oh. The heat will take us higher, oh, oh, oh. Feel it. Oh, 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 oh. I can feel it. Oh, 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 oh. Oh, 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 oh.
Twenty first, twenty twenty-three. The time is now nine thirty-four. I call to order the meeting of the Birmingham City Council. We'll have our invocation led by Pastor Michael Todd of New Rising Star Church of Sillicoga Campus, and pledge of allegiance by Councilor Valerie Abbott. If you're willing, please stand.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Let us pray. Eternal, everlasting Father, we thank you right now for this day, this time, this moment. We thank you for this day that we have never seen before, and this day that we'll never see again. We thank you for salvation, life, health, and strength. We thank you for your love, your mercy, and your grace. And we thank you for your goodness, for you are good all the time, and all the time you are good. We thank you, Father, for it's in you that we live, we move, we have our being. For it is you who has made us and not we ourself. And we just want to tell you thank you. Without you, we are absolutely nothing. But we're few, all things are possible. For you are able to do exceedingly and abundantly above all we can ask of think according to the power that works inside of us. Now, Father, we repent right now for every deed done in thought, word, and deed, sins of omission, sins of commission. Cleanse us and remove all that righteousness, renew in us a right spirit and a right mind. We decrease right now that you may increase in us. For we want all of you and none of us, give us a fresh anointing, fresh revelation, speak to us, through us, and for us. Guide and direct our thoughts, our words, and our action this day, every day, for the rest of our life, in the mighty name of Jesus. Now, Father, we just thank you right now for the leadership in Birmingham, Alabama. We love our leadership, and we know that you too. And therefore, Father, we ask that you would just breathe on them, that you would touch them, that you would strengthen them, that you would guide and direct them, that you would give them supernatural ideas, supernatural thoughts, supernatural creativity, supernatural strategies and analogies, dear heaven and Father, that elevate our city to another level, that we may be a city of light, dear heaven and Father, that would give you honor, praise, and glory like never before. And we pray, Father, that they will love one another, that they will forgive one another, that they would give to one another, that they will have mercy upon one another, that they will be unified with each other each and every day, in the mighty name of Jesus. And I pray, Father, that it would be done starting this day forward, in the mighty name of Jesus. We thank you right now that the just shall live by faith, and therefore, Father, we walk by faith and not by sight. We don't have to see it to believe it. We believe it in order to see it. And we know that if God be for us, who can be against us? Let God be true, and every man be a liar. And we thank you, Father, for this is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. For, Father, this is my decree. This is my declaration. This is my prayer. And I consider it done right now, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen, amen, and amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ooh, thank you, Pastor Todd. We appreciate that prayer. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, Mr. Clerk, if you could give us a roll call.
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore.
Let the good times roll.
Councilmember Quinn. Morning. Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williamson. Councilmember Woods. Councilpro Tim Smithman. Council President Alexander.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Happy Fat Tuesday, everybody. The minutes are not ready from October third, twenty twenty-two, through February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do we have any communications from the mayor? Good morning, cheers.
We do, Madam President, and there he is, right there.
Yeah. Morning, Mr. Mayor.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam President, and good morning to the entire council, as well as good morning to the public. It's good to see everybody. Excuse me. Madam President and council, I have actually a few notes. The first one is, this is, actually, I want to acknowledge Jimmy Coleman, who was elected by his peers, neighborhood officers, neighborhood presidents, community presidents yesterday for the Citizens Advisory Board. So congratulations to Jimmy Coleman. This week is National Engineering Week, if you did not know that. It's February nineteenth through the twenty-fifth. As National Engineering Week, we talk about so much that goes on in the private sector and growth in our country and across the world. But I do want to take the time to publicly acknowledge and celebrate all the engineers, technicians, and technologists who work right here for the city of Birmingham, as city employees who work to make our enterprise and our city a better place. So on behalf of a grateful city, we appreciate you and thank you. Madam President and council, I want to provide an update related to rental assistance. The first note is, you all will see on your agenda another installment of funding for the city's emergency rental assistance program. It is recognized as one of the most... Again, excuse me. Our program is recognized as one of the most effective in the nation, which has allowed us to get additional funding for the fourth time. We are receiving eight point four million dollars to help even more families, to help more families, bringing the total funds received to about twenty-six million dollars. So far, just some stats and to provide you all some numbers on our, who we've been able to assist. So far, we've been able to provide assistance to two thousand five hundred and forty-four families, totaling to fifteen million dollars. But to the public, I want to say, if you need rental help, if you need rental assistance, please go to birminghamal.gov/renthelp. Again, that's birminghamal.gov/renthelp, or simply call two zero five two five four two three zero nine. If you didn't know, today is Fat Tuesday, and there's a Mardi Gras celebration that's being led by Commissioner Tyson. But along with Commissioner, we will celebrate Mardi Gras with a parade downtown. It kicks off at eleven AM at Fourteenth Street and Morris Avenue near Railroad Park, and will end at Nineteenth Street North and Ninth Avenue North. And I hope you all will take the time to make it. This is for the council. We were blessed with some king cake, actually, from the city of New Orleans yesterday, but it's actually supposed to be cut in celebration of Fat Tuesday today, so it's fresh. So if you want any, let me know. It's pretty big. Social Justice and Racial Equity Team is set to host a book discussion. So in celebration of Black History Month, the Division of Social Justice and Racial Equity will host a panel discussion on the sixteen nineteen project, A New Origin Story. The panel will feature former Birmingham Mayor Dr. Richard Erickson Jr., founding Birmingham Civil Rights Institute President Odessa Woolfoe, community organizer Chad Freeman, and it will be moderated by Gina Malasham, who's the director of the Jefferson County Memorial Project. For more information, please go to birminghamal.gov/sjre for details. The National Southern League Museum is set to host a Black History Month event as well. And the Negro League Museum and Foundation will present its Rhythm and Wines Black History Month tribute. It is a community event. It is set this Thursday, February twenty-third, from five thirty to seven thirty PM. V ninety-four-nine radio personality Lady Wu will host this evening, evening features, spoken word performers, music from DJ Justice, and beverage sampling from African-American winery and brewery companies, Hell and Nature Estates, and Beard Black Men. For more information on this event and for details, please go to birminghamnslm.org. Just a note on bulk trash, Madam President and council, the city of Birmingham will continue to keep residents informed about bulk trash pickup with daily updates, and those updates can be found online at birminghamal.gov/bulktrash. A note about uniform trash bins. We are behind in our February, I guess, allocation of bins, so I want to give some detail and update. What's happened is, we've worked to finalize the list of addresses for the second distribution of twenty thousand uniform trash bins. And so with this month coming to a close, we are, we're not only confident but sure that distribution will start in March. Residents in this next batch will be notified via mail and with instructions, so they will get detail. For the twenty thousand, they will be spread out again among five thousand in each city quadrant, north, south, east, and west. As a reminder for those residents who already are using the new carts, you should place them in front of your homes. Any household garbage placed on the ground in alleys or on the ground in front of your residents will not be picked up. And you can receive more updates by going to birminghamal.gov/pickup or by texting B H M ready to eight 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 seven seven seven. I have one more note, Madam President and council, actually, two more, but as I, next to the last, I want to go ahead and call up Crystal Smitherman, President Pro Tim, to come down. The city of Birmingham will host a blood drive tomorrow, Wednesday, the twenty-second, from nine AM to four PM at the Bowel Auditorium. That address and location is nineteen thirty Reverend Abraham Woods Jr. Boulevard. Your blood donation is needed to help save a life, and we need more people to sign up. So we're not pleased with the current sign up, so please encourage those you know to sign up. Donors will receive a ten dollar Amazon gift card, a T-shirt, a pizza, I didn't know about the pizza, Chief Sparks, and automatically be entered for a chance to win a trip for two to Clearwater Beach, Florida. So I hope that's a little incentive and motivation for you. But please sign up in advance at redcrossblood.org. Again, that's redcrossblood.org, and then enter the code B H M. Madam President and council, with me, I have your colleague, Madam Pro Tim, Crystal Smitherman. And in the hallway, which, no, they're not in the hallway anymore, they're right here with us. We want to celebrate, acknowledge, and give some public appreciation to a brilliant group of dynamic entrepreneurs, TaxWiz. Please come on up. TaxWiz is a business founded in twenty fifteen and has quickly grown to be one of the largest virtual tax preparation companies in the country. Y'all don't have to be shy, you can come on up. In twenty twenty, they developed cutting-edge tax preparation software, Titan Tax Pro. And what that allows is, it gives tax preparers the ability to be virtual, changing the average tax preparation time from four hours to literally twenty minutes. I would say these young people behind us are geniuses. They're also the first black-owned business to have IRS-approved DIY tax software, and one of fifteen IRS-approved tax preparation software. Their executive board, if you didn't know, is made up of five young black tax professionals, two of which are from our city, Birmingham. This business is also headquartered in Birmingham. But I would like Madam Pro Tim to give a little bit more about TaxWiz.
Thank you, Mayor Woodfin, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to bring before us TaxWiz. I'll be very short. I really want to make sure that we acknowledge and celebrate not only black-owned businesses, but young millennials who are really making groundbreaking development in the IRS, because this is one of fifteen, is it the country, or in the country? And so I really just want to celebrate them, I really just want to give them their flowers while they'll stay here, and really because I think, you know, we have to be on the eye for them, because they're really going to take this internationally. So I'll let the CEO, COO speak, and if you guys can't trudge yourselves, that'd be great.
Perfect. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
How y'all doing? Good morning. My name is Tevin Harrow. I'm the CEO of TaxWiz, and we're really grateful to be here. You know, we deal with the only industry in the United States that every single working person has to deal with and probably hate, and that's Texas, right? But even though it's the only industry, there hasn't been a major innovative company in it since TurboTax in nineteen ninety-three. So we created that all-in-one platform to solve this problem. It took us two years, but after two years, we became the fifteenth, one of fifteen IRS-approved in the entire US. Saying we're the only black owner, we're the only owners under fifty years old, and now we're changing the way that two hundred and forty million returns are filed. We were doing this virtually. I moved back from Texas last year to make the home of the business in Birmingham. We're in Innovation Depot, for sure, where we've done a lot of work with the Birmingham Business Alliance and participated in some of their advisory programs that drastically helped us take off. We are in Innovation Depot. We have a lot of mentors and people that's looking out for us and giving us that advice, as well as different things in the Alabama-Berlinian ecosystem. It has allowed us now, in March, to go to LA for three months, where we will be mentored by multi-billionaires and people that have sold businesses, and we're bringing all of the learners and the different things that we learned back into the Birmingham ecosystem to continue to rise. So we're excited for all the support that we got here. We're excited for this opportunity to be here today, and, you know, with your help, we're going to continue to put Birmingham on the map as, you know, the new technology sector that Silicon Valley was before, you know, they became Silicon Valley. So thank you, guys, for this opportunity.
Good morning. My name is Olumuyuawalade, good morning, the current COO of TaxWiz. Tevin mentioned that we will be in LA, but that doesn't mean Birmingham still isn't our home. We'll be coming back. We're always going to be headquartered in Birmingham, Alabama, and our goal is to use those learnings from LA to bring in new entrepreneurship programs to the city as well. So that's one thing that we plan on tackling is, hey, with our software, yeah, we'll make a lot of money from it, but hey, how do we pour back into the community that helped us get there? So we want to grow and build tax preparers in the community, and we feel like we'll be able to do that here after. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jordan Ward. I'm the CPO of TaxWiz. Just excited to be here. Appreciate you guys, you know, listening to what we have to say, so excited. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Mayo Onakoya, a tax preparer, also a part of IT support with TaxWiz. Just very excited to be here amongst you all right now, and looking forward just to all the great innovations that we have here and for the future.
Great morning. My name is Bree. I'm the chief people officer at TaxWiz, and I just want to start by saying, we're blessed, we're honored, we are favored to be here and be with you guys. And I let y'all know, we talk business, but we're focused on people, and I believe that's what makes us different.
Madam President, first of all, thank you, Madam Pro Tim, and I think it's certainly not to be overlooked, the dynamism of these young folks that look like me, and we want to celebrate that fact, that's something to be celebrated. So in the absence of the mayor, obviously, he's a little bit challenged right now. That concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you very much. I'm sure that our councillors do want to talk to you for a bit, so don't go yet. Council Clark.
I just want to congratulate you all on your accomplishments and the black history you're making, and, you know, bringing this to us during Engineering Week, and, you know, a tech company, so thank you. And really excited, wondering, you mentioned the people side. I know there's Vitus Centers that do free tax preparation for people who make under fifty thousand dollars. Will you all have any services available at a low cost to, you know, very low-income people? Is that by chance a part of your platform?
For sure. So we did Montgomery Tech Lab, and part of that was, we went to, we came to talk to people in Birmingham, we went to Arbor, and we talked to Tuskegee, and they had a grant for that program, but what they found was, they had way more people in line than they could serve. So kind of what we were talking to them about, and they had to discontinue the program. We was talking to them about, well, now that tax professionals and tax preparers will be able to do it so much faster, they'll be able to actually revitalize that program. So, you know, we're in beta right now, but once we're ready to go to all of the different municipalities, we'll be able to offer the software, and they'll be able to serve those people that need it for free or need the extra help without having to pay for it.
Thank you. So you're in beta. When do you expect to fully launch? Do you have a projected date?
Yeah, we have a cohort of tax professionals and accountants all over the US that's going through it this tax season as we speak, and then kind of we're using those learnings, making those changes to make it the best product possible. And then especially as we go in LA and we get more tech advisory and all those kind of things, then we'll do a hard lunch after that program finishes in LA in June. And then on the people's side, too, just to, so we've even transformed our company to a B Corp. So most of the companies, you know, it's fourteen other companies, they all make over fifty, one hundred million, multiple of them make billion dollars a year, because, like we said, every single person has to file. So we know that, okay, now as number fifteen, we'll probably make a lot of money, it's only take X amount of people. But we switched to a B Corp, because we are going to be just as much for people as we are for profit, and we're making a public commitment to get audited on it every single year. So the B Corp side of it is offering entrepreneur workshops. So as we're learning all these things, you know, we didn't even know that raising funds existed. We didn't know that this world of being able to get developers and all of these different things existed. So if more of us know this, then we won't treat our businesses just like, you know, just as small businesses that we have to crunch and not hire the customer support we need, and all these different things. So we're dedicated to where there's the college level and so on and so forth on the financial literary side, but also on the entrepreneur and business workshop side of every single thing that we're learning, we're giving back, and we've already actually started it. We just came back from A and M. We've been to Alabama a couple of times, we're going to TSU, and we'll continue to grow out that program.
Thank you. Council Tate.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to Birmingham.
Happy to be back.
I'm really honored that you all have chosen to, you know, land your businesses here in Birmingham. Really like what you stand for, collective movement and building, and you said one key thing, people, and how you guys are mobilizing and moving around, particularly in Silicon Valley, broadening your horizon to learn, you know, what it means to build an ecosystem. That's super important, and how you're pouring back in, you know, into people, as you stated. And I love what you said, you know, learning the business, you know, about profit, but, you know, about people. So that's, you know, that's what, you know, we stand for. I love it. Welcome to Birmingham. Thanks to my colleagues for having you all here and being a blessing, you know, to the community, and then broadening your horizon, going out in the community, and educating, you know, our people on, you know, the importance of filing taxes and what it means to, you know, even come into the tax profession. So again, welcome to Birmingham.
For sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I just want to close out by thanking you all. I'm just so excited to see you standing before us today, bringing this opportunity for residents. As you said, death and taxes, right?
Death and taxes. That's our pitch right there.
It's going to hit us all. And so who are the two that are from Birmingham, Birmingham natives? Thank you so much. What you exhibit for us today, and I thank you for encouraging your colleagues to bring this to Birmingham. So often, we educate and we give an opportunity for our youth and our young people, and they leave us, and they take all of that energy, all that talent, all that education away. So I'm grateful to you for bringing that and bringing this to Birmingham. I'm so excited for you, one of the only fifteen, you say? So you've already got your kudos, and you've got your flowers already. So just continue to excel, and thank you again for the work that you're doing. We always talk about a succession plan. I think we're in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Promise I was coming back. That concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate that. Mr. Clerk, do we have any nominations of boards and agencies?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. At this time, we will go ahead and hear the items that are considered for consent.
Consent agenda for today starts on page two. We have items two, three, and four on consent. Page three, we have items five, six, seven, and nine designated as consent. Page four, items ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are on consent. Page five, we have items fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen on consent. Please note that I'm writing number fifteen. Third line from the bottom, that should be sixteen hundred dollars. And on item, that's item fifteen, I'm sorry. Third line from the bottom, that should be sixteen hundred dollars. On item sixteen, third line from the bottom, that should be irrigation, not drainage improvements, irrigation improvements. Page six, we pick back up with the consent agenda with items nineteen and twenty-one. Page seven, we have items twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four on consent. Page eight, we have items twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven on consent. Page nine, we have items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty on consent. Please note that item twenty-eight was recommended by Budget and Finance. Page ten, we have items thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three on consent. Page eleven, we have items thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six on consent. Please note that item thirty-six was recommended by the Public Safety Committee. On page twelve, we have items thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one on consent. And note that items thirty-seven and thirty-eight were also recommended by Public Safety. Page thirteen, we have items forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven on consent. Page fourteen, we have items forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-three on consent. Page fifteen, we have items fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, and fifty-nine on consent. Page sixteen, we have items sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, and sixty-five on consent. Page seventeen, we have items sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, and seventy on consent. Page eighteen, we have items seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, and seventy-five on consent. Page nineteen, we have items seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, and eighty on consent. Page twenty, we have items eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, and eighty-four on consent. Page twenty-one, we have items eighty-five, eighty-six, and eighty-seven on consent, and we want to request that item eighty-eight be added to the consent agenda. And that concludes the consent agenda.
All right, councillors, there's a request to add item eighty-eight to consent. Are there any other items that you'd like to add or pull from consent? Council Moore.
No, ma'am, Madam President. I just had a question. Item thirty-nine through, I want to say seventy-nine, with the demolitions, is it possible for the council to get a list of those active demolitions that are in the queue?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Council.
I just noticed that consent item number sixty-three, I mean, that amount of money we spent to take down that structure is extraordinary compared to, you know, the average cost incurred. It just raised some curiosity. Do y'all know what we took down at that location, off the top of your head?
I have to check. I'm sorry, Madam President.
Yes, Chief.
I have to check. I think that's an apartment complex, but let me double check.
Okay, you can, you can tell me, he can tell me later.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I'm just curious, because it's extraordinary compared to the others.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else? Council Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. Can we please take off items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty-five?
Twenty-eight. Twenty-nine.
Yes, ma'am. So that would be...
And thirty-five.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it's twenty-eight and twenty-nine on page nine, and item thirty-five on eleven, request to be pulled from consent. Any other items, councillors? Council Abbott, yes?
Seven?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's a ten-year agreement, and I thought that there was a limit on the number of years that we could sign contracts. So what is the difference with Dell? So what is the difference with Dell?
Chief? Or Mr. Attorney?
Can you speak into the mic?
All right, there's some of the Alabama code. This actual agreement will probably...
Okay, I didn't notice that it was a lease, so I guess that does explain it. So I don't want to take it off of consent. And then on item 32, which is on page 10?
Yes.
It talks about the city's Neighborhood Association Advisory Board members. And I was trying to figure out what the Neighborhood Association Advisory Board was. Is that a different name for neighborhood associations?
That's a good question.
I mean, each neighborhood has the right to create an advisory board, but is that what this is or is this?
We'll find out from Ms. Alice Williams. Counselor Abbott, give us just a second.
Only the C A B, not all officers?
We don't even, we don't want to speculate. We'll give you, we'll give you the proper answer.
I just have been around here a long time and I've never heard of Neighborhood Association Advisory Boards, but, you know, anything's possible.
Get some clarity. We want to keep it on consent, we just want to get the names right?
We just got an answer. I mean, I don't want to take it off consent, I don't want to hold it up. And then on item 30?
Okay.
Which is on page nine, it says that it was recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee, but that is not accurate. We didn't consider it Budget and Finance, we just received information. So I suppose that should be Committee of the Whole.
Correct.
Instead of Budget and Finance.
Everybody in agreement that's correct? And transportation. So we'll put Committee of the Whole and transportation. Is that okay, Chief? Thank you. Now, we did take 30 off consent.
No.
Eight, 29.
And I didn't, I didn't take it off consent, I just want to make that correction.
Thank you. All right.
Madam President?
Yes, Chief?
Yes, it's for all of the neighborhood offices.
All 99, okay. Good, thank you. I just wanted to confirm that. I thought maybe it was just like a little glitch in the name.
Thank you.
So we changed anything on?
On the clarification on 32?
Yes, it should not say Neighborhood Advisory Board. It should say just for all of the 99 neighborhoods' offices.
So instead of saying cities, Neighborhood Association Advisory Board members, it should say all 99 neighborhoods?
Seems like if we just took out the words Advisory Board, we'd be okay.
Okay. Everybody in agreement with that? Little words missing in here?
Yeah. Strike Advisory.
Thank you, Clerk. And Clerk?
Sounds good.
All right, and was there a question about items? Was there anything else, Deputy Administrator, that, any other items we were to be aware of?
We have some items that have come up.
Okay.
Item 1, item 2.
Thank you. All right. Just want to be sure we're clear. Thank you very much. All right, councilors, all items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the Agenda Order of Business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Councilors, if I could hear a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Second. Actually, one thing, Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
Did we say that item 31 was recommended by Budget and Finance?
Uh...
And did we say items 36, 37, 38 were recommended by Public Safety?
Okay, 31, we did not add, that's Budget and Finance. What are the others?
And 28 was also recommended by Budget and Finance.
We did add that.
Okay, and then 36, 37, and 38 were recommended by Public Safety.
We have that.
Okay, I was making sure.
That's okay. Thank you very much.
Oh, second.
All right. We have that motion and a second.
That vote should be up.
All right, thank you. The consent agenda passes. If you have any items that were listed or added for consent, those have been approved. We will continue with the rest of our meeting. If you want to stay with us, please do, but we'll continue with the rest of the agenda. Mr. Clerk, first item?
Okay, let's see. First item, it's been requested to be withdrawn by the applicant. Next will be item 8, also being requested to be withdrawn, except this is, I guess, by Public Safety. Chair?
Which one?
I love it. Item 8.
Item 8. Item 1 was withdrawn by the applicant. And so I guess we will go to item, I guess it will be 20 next. The ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute for and as the active said city a contract for the sale of real estate with Emily Kate Seillman, under which Emily Kate Seillman will purchase certain vacant real estates located at 1203 Crest Hill Road, Birmingham for the assessed value of $28,700 and upon such other terms and conditions as are contained in the contract and authorize the mayor to execute a deed and such other documents and instruments as required to finalize the sale of the property upon the terms of the contract. This is an item of permanent operation, so I need you, U.C., to entertain it today. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, saying no. Did I hear no? No, okay, I thought I heard no. Okay, my motion on the item, please.
Second?
The item is before you.
Okay, we just need a clarification on? Item number 8, it's been requested. Was this item brought back to us or was one that had been, I think we had to bring it back for consideration, considered it before, and we delayed it and bringing it back?
No.
And moved it back to us, yes.
We're not here?
This is what we're doing now?
No, please don't hurt that. It's withdrawn.
I'm sorry, I walked away from the podium. Please forgive me. It's withdrawn. All right.
Right, we're on 20.
Thank you. It's been withdrawn for consideration. Chair of this committee? Yes.
If I can just maybe add a little clarity, at the pleasure of the chair, the item was withdrawn. The item was withdrawn because it was untimely submitted. So it will come back to the council, it just won't be today.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Councilors, you're clear. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, go ahead.
All right, 20 is before you get. We had a motion, second.
Thank you, sir.
For permanent operation.
All right, we had the U.C. and we had the motion before us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so now, councilors, this item is before us for the sale of this particular property. Any questions? Do we need a presentation?
I do have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Abbott?
I wanted to know about property that the city has that is for sale. Is it listed on our website somewhere? I've never seen it, but that doesn't mean...
So, no, it's not. Typically, what we will have people do, counselor, is follow up with I E.O. and go through Ms. Janice Dauther, but it's not listed on the city's website. The property is not listed wholesale on the city's website.
Okay, so a person who wants to buy property would just have to stumble over it to find out who owned it?
Well, to not stumble over it, we typically have it walked down by Ms. Dauther and the team from I E.O. to determine if there are any challenges with the property, like the specific details, because we do not have it housed in one specific site. So we always encourage citizens to reach out to I E.O. or reach out to us, we connect them with Ms. Dauther.
Okay, so any property owned by the city of Birmingham, though, you would just, you would not know that it was available. No one knows. They just find out when they decide they, they're interested in it and they check to see who owns it?
Well, so that's been a part of the process we've done literally since we've gotten here because the city owns so much. So getting our arms around all of the property that the city has has been a challenge. The way we found it to be faster is if there's something specific that a person is interested in, while we do this kind of amalgamation of all of our properties, let I E.O. walk it out with the citizen if there's a specific interest, property they're interested in.
Okay, but we're working on getting our arms around what we own so that we actually could put it on the market if we wanted to.
Because we get this inquiry often about property that the city owns or property that's available so that people could purchase it.
All right, thank you, Counselor Moore.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was gonna ask the same thing, if this was different than land bank property, because...
That's what he just said. That's what he just said. So that's a part of the challenge, separating the land bank properties from the city-owned properties. It's a pretty massive effort, but, but yes, those processes are different, which is why we typically will start with I E.O. They work well with land bank to differentiate the two. It's a massive effort, but the easiest thing is to let them filter until we can come back to you all with a global list of all of those properties. It's a pretty, it's a pretty massive effort and it has been.
Coach.
Counselor Quinn?
Yeah, now, now I'm curious, because this is a single-family residential property and I'm just curious about, you know, how we came to, came about to be in possession of that. I mean, a lot of the city-owned properties are vacant lots or, you know, commercial properties. So, you know, I guess my question is, is like, how did we come about acquiring single-family residential? Was it, you know, in relationship to some planned intersection improvement or foreclosure on a we debatement lien or?
So Chief Mitchell and I both know that we need to walk down because the history of how we acquired it, we don't know. So we'll find out from our team and then provide you that information.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Clark?
I guess my question deals more with process. You know, I feel like by, I think I learned before when I asked, that our vote declares this, this property surplus and not need it for municipal purpose. And because it's a house, I don't think we would need it for municipal purpose. But I guess I'm just wondering, where in the process is it declared? I mean, how do you, how do you determine that no department needs the property before you say like, I mean, again, this is a house, so I know we don't need it for municipal purposes, but is there a process to evaluate whether other departments might need the property or may have an interest in the property?
Meaning city, city department?
City, yeah.
So it's a couple of things.
Can you repeat the question?
So before we sell a property, is there something in the process that checks across the enterprise that no, it's not needed for a municipal purpose? In this case, it's a house, so...
Yes, and that falls under I E.O., Janice Dauther, who leads the city of Birmingham's surplus real estate portfolio.
So what, do they just poll the department heads or something?
Yeah, there's an actual, oh, yeah.
Is there a form?
I forgot to even tell you that. There's an actual property committee that meets, but there's discussion around use of property or the lack thereof, or if it's needed in the future, which what we find is, it's usually no. Like 99.999% of the time, we don't actually, actually need the use of the property as a city employer.
Okay.
Use of a facility and/or land, we don't need it. Like, we have high interest in actually disposing of that via sale.
Okay.
Mrs. Abbott?
And one other question is, how do we set the price? Like, this is on Crest Hill Road, so that's a very nice neighborhood in District 2. So how, how do we set the price?
For the most part, prices are usually dictated by, what's the actual term? Where we do appraisal. Can think of the term, Mrs. Abbott. Once the appraisal comes back, we are then in a position to say, here's the value of it, and then there's negotiation, up or down, or right at what that actual value is.
Thank you.
And the following three categories. At the amount, sometimes people want to buy it above, rare, a rare moment, or sometimes we negotiate down.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Williams. Then I'll come back to Counselor Clark.
Okay, so we keep saying that there's, this is a, this is a residence, but to my, if I know where this is, I don't think that there is a residence on this. I think it's just...
It is, yeah, it's a house.
Are you familiar with this in your district?
I don't think that there, I think that the residence is actually on 1207.
Seven.
And then the vacant lot is 1203. But I just wanted to clarify that, that we're not selling the house. I think, yeah, so we're selling this to somebody who wants to buy this as, I guess, can they, I guess they can develop it.
So we have that answer.
Clarification, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Saxon.
Mr. Saxon, thank you. Finance office, right?
Living property location. This is to purchase the lot to use.
Is that clear? Does that help clarity?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions regarding this item, Counselor? And Counselor Clark, were you okay? Okay.
I just feel like, you know, a clear process would be helpful. And, and where does it go committee-wise? Because this says recommended by finance and budget, and I'm not sure that's really a finance and budget thing, but anyway.
Thank you. All right. I hear down here, you know, it's sort of sell a property, but I understand which direction you're going in, but we may have a committee that might be able to work on that very soon. So thank you. Yes, and you had asked that question about administration?
Yeah, I thought it was Administration Committee, because we have dealt with the, when we've met in the past, we have considered...
Commercial properties. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Madam President, to your colleagues' comment, I definitely think for your committee process, when we talk about the sale of commercial property, but in this instance, it would probably be more internally vetted through an actual property committee that includes department heads and other staff. And then they bring it up to us on, from a recommendation standpoint, and then we bring it before you.
Thank you. Anything else? You still have a look down there, Counselor Moore? You okay?
Yeah, I'm good. I know in this case, in this case, it's a, it's a vacant lot that is in question. But I'm curious if there are any residential properties that the, the city does own that you all know of?
Outright is not many.
Not many, okay.
We would be different from the land bank.
Got you.
Two, two worlds. In a situation like this, you heard the year that that land was acquired, I imagine that was well before Richard Harrington, so I'm quite sure that's not something...
Our practice.
Yeah.
And I only ask that question in terms of, you know, just being able to put those back on road with folks that could possibly utilize them and seeing if, you know, if there are residential properties that the city does own, offloading those first to be able to get people back in them.
We are, we are in full agreement, sir.
Cool.
All right. Thank you, Counselor... All right. Thank you, Counselor Williams.
Just one more comment, Mr. Mayor. I hope that since we're selling this for only 28, seven, thirty, basically $30,000, I hope we can, uh, keep that $30,000 in District Two and use it on that road, perhaps traffic calming. Thank you.
Always for the... Thank you, Counselor. Counselors, I believe we're ready for the vote, Mr. Clerk.
All right.
All right, thank you. Item 20 passes. Next item.
Looks like we're going to 28. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver a funding agreement with HBCU Spring Coming LLC, which the city will provide funding to HBCU Spring Coming in an amount not to exceed $165,000 from monies received by the city under the American Rescue Plan Act pursuant to Amendment 772 to assist as a sponsor in the two-day event that celebrates the HBCU experience, three events, panels, and service activities to be held in Birmingham, Alabama on March 17th and 18th, 2023. Motion, please.
Motion on the item.
Second.
All right.
You good?
Uh, is HBCU, uh, Chief, uh, this is about HBCU Spring Coming. Do you have somebody, or Mayor, do you have anybody who would speak to this? I see Cornelius Wesley is here.
Yes, is there a question or you want a presentation?
Uh, well, I know Counselor Williams had a question.
Yeah, well, it didn't go to, um, economic development, and I wanted to see what we actually grossed last year from an economic development, since this is a 772.
Yes, sir. This...
Last year.
I'm not sure, um, Mr. Wesley over how you heard your questions, but I'll bring him for the mic now. Um...
Wesley.
Do you need this question to be repeated?
Yes, please.
Good morning. So, um, since this didn't come to economic development, and this is a 772 item, um, I wanted to know what we actually grossed from an economic, what the city grossed last year from hosting this event.
So to clarify, I'm pretty sure we did present before you at the same time as we presented the Birmingham Business Resource Center project. Um, in terms of what it grossed, we expected an economic impact of 4 million. Our numbers came in at around 3.7 million.
Okay. And that's in, I guess, total economic impact?
Total economic impact, yes, sir.
All right, great.
Okay, that's it. Um, do any other councilors have any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wesley. Okay, well, Mr. Clerk, I'll call for the vote.
Counselors. Thank you. All right, that vote should be up.
All right, thank you. That item passes. Next item.
Should be item 29. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the National Collegiate Athletic Association. Under which the Birmingham Cross-Plex, it shall host the 2023 and 2026 Division Three Men and Women Indoor Track and Field Championships March the 10th through the 11th, 2023, and March the 13th through the 14th, 2026. And the city shall spend funds in an amount not to exceed $112,000 for the championships in the respective years, 2023 and 26. And the NCA, she'll reimburse the city the same within 60 days of the event. Motion.
Move the item second. All right, thank you. Counselors, this item was pulled from consent. And, um, are there any questions regarding this particular item? Counselor Williams, you pulled that one.
Yeah, I wanted to know how, uh, what, what the economic impact is on this, what our projected economic impact is on this item.
Madam President.
What's the question, Counselor Williams? I apologize.
No problem. It's what the projected economic impact is on this economic...
Madam President, um, so I think when we presented this item to the committee, um, it wasn't technically a number that was established because we hadn't hosted this event since 2008. But on the preliminary numbers that were provided by the CDB, it was, it had an economic impact of almost $18 million.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? We're ready for the vote.
So, Mr. Clerk, that vote should be up.
Thank you very much. Item 29 passes. Next item.
Item 35. A resolution authorizing the mayor to expend funds in an amount not to exceed $502,000 for the registration, up to 198 neighborhood association officers and volunteers in the city of Birmingham's neighborhood associations. Not to exceed two per neighborhood association, three CRR's, as employees of the city to attend the 2023 Neighborhoods USA Conference in El Paso, Texas, May the 24th to May the 27th, 2023. This event will serve to educate and train the neighborhood association officers and CRR's on the vision of communities and provide information that will benefit those seeking resources for community and economic development within the city. Said funding to come from the respective neighborhood associations for an amount not to exceed $5,000 per neighborhood association. Motion, please.
I'm over approval.
All right, thank you, councilors. This item was pulled from consent. This is to, um, provide the funds for, uh, registration and travel to the 2023 NUSA Conference. I'm not sure who pulled the item. Okay, Counselor, Counselor Williams starts.
No, thank you. Um, so for, I, I want to clarify or get clarification on where the staff expenses are coming from and make sure that they're not coming from the neighborhood budget. Because as it's written, it suggests that the staff expenses to attend do actually come from the neighborhood budget. But I want to clarify that based on questions I've gotten from neighborhood presidents, that that's not...
It's coming from community development?
Okay, so that actually comes from the development office. And then my second thing is, I, you know, on, on this item, and this is probably, uh, this is my, my opinion and probably a very unpopular one, but so be it. You know, I think the expenditure of over half a million dollars, uh, for, uh, for people to travel to, um, El Paso, Texas, um, is a little bit excessive. I think that, you know, we could probably get away with having, um, some, some other formula, whether it be community, a couple of people from each community coming back and reporting what they learned, or people from the CAB, I don't know. But I do think that a half a million, over half a million dollars to all go, for, uh, everyone in the city to go to NUSA is probably not the best expenditure of taxpayer dollars, but I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Thank you, Counselor O'Klein.
Yes, um, in follow-up to Counselor Williams' comment, um, I, I don't disagree with you. Uh, I think the, the reality is, is that the actual expenditure will not approach anywhere near that dollar amount. Um, I mean, this is just, uh, you know, for the purpose that in theory that if all of these people did, it could cost as much. But I, uh, I think in practice, that hasn't been the case. Um, that, you know, that being said, I, I do think that you're, you know, there's value in your comment and that, um, you know, there should be some, some further consideration, um, of, of how much this is. That be, the other point that I wanted to make is, is that these funds for those neighborhood officers come out of the neighborhood association's, um, balance. And, you know, we can argue whether or not that's a good use of their funds, but, uh, in practice, you know, we allow the neighborhood associations to, for the most part, determine how those funds are expended. So, uh, you know, it's, it's kind of up to the neighborhood associations. It's, it's not necessarily their money, you know, per se, but, um, in, in practice, we treat it like that. So just wanted to make those comments.
Thank you, Counselor Williams.
To piggyback on that, I just, I think that, and this, you know, all, we have 99 neighborhoods. There, there are all varying levels of participation. Um, and, um, you might have a neighborhood that has 50 people show up to the neighborhood meeting, and you might have a neighborhood that can't get a quorum of the neighborhood officers. And so I think it's important that the public knows that this, that, that the funding that is allocated to the neighborhood can be used to repair the sidewalk that everyone's griping about, can be used to, uh, to put in speed calming that everyone is asking for, or it could be spent, um, to, to send some of your neighbors to Tulsa, Oklahoma. So I think it's just important to, uh, to, uh, to point that out. Excuse me, El Paso, wherever we're going this year, El Paso, somewhere, somewhere new every year.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Councilors, are we ready for the vote? Counselor Abbott, I'm sorry.
Just, just one question. Um, in the past, there has been a requirement that people who attend NUSA would write a report, tell what they learned, all that kind of stuff, or make a presentation before the neighborhood association, so that the people who didn't get to go on the trip will actually know what was at the NUSA conference that was of value to that neighborhood that sent, you know, that sent the person. And I was wondering if that requirement is still around, or if we gave up?
Madam, Ms. Abbott, that you're looking this way, but we can't help you because that was a council-mandated thing. That wasn't, that wasn't administration.
Really?
Yes.
Well, all I can say is, is this has been controversial for all 22 years I've been here. I could write a book, but I'm not going to. I don't have time. But, um, but, you know, it does seem that if we send people to NUSA from a neighborhood, there should be some product that should result from it that is of benefit to that neighborhood. So, but maybe it's unmanageable from a management standpoint.
Actually, I want you all to feel empowered. You have full control here. You dictate, you control, you decide how many people can go and parameters around what happens if and when were there and wouldn't they get back, and what they should report out. You have full control. Please feel empowered.
I was gonna say, I know Counselor Moore wants to, um, be recognized. I know, since I've been on the council, we have added that once before, where there was, or there was a council addition at one time, where there was an expectation of bringing that information back or what type of action items were, um, added to this particular item or to an item like this. Counselor Moore?
No, that was gonna be the suggestion that I made, um, since we, you know, I've had discussions about the, uh, citizens' participation plan. Let's just go ahead and, you know, add that as an addition, uh, so that, you know, other members of the community can get that information.
Counselor Clark.
And I just wanted to note that while we make it available for everyone to go, I see neighborhoods not send people all the time, you know, because of other priorities. And, um, so I think they do kind of decide, can we afford, is, is there gonna be enough value, or is there some other priority that we need to address with the funds we have in our treasury? So I see that kind of deliberation happen, and I see people decide, sometimes much to the chagrin of the folks who wanted to go, um, they decide not to send anyone.
Mayor Woodfin, two motions.
Again, you, all neighborhoods collectively hovering at about $3 million, so it's a lot of funds out there.
Great reminder on that. Counselor Moore?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, or maybe, you know, it's a way for us to kind of incentivize. Um, so we know that there are certain neighborhoods that operate at a high level, and they actually use their funds to address the issues that need to be addressed. Um, maybe that's a way for us to say, well, hey, since you all have used your funds in that way, we can kind of assist, um, in helping people to go to learn more information to bring back to their neighborhoods. Yeah, like a, like a merit system of some sort.
I agree. Counselors, how do we want to wordsmith this? And do you want to add that there's a report that would be provided during CAB? Or what, what do you think is the best? Counselor O'Klein.
Yes, I would, uh, I mean, the, the, the conference is not until May, and I know that, you know, there's reservations and things that need to be made or whatever. Um, do we, do we have to take action on this? Is this a item that we need to address today? Or if not, I, I would make a motion that we delay one week so that we can figure out the exact language that we want to put in the resolution.
I'm looking for administration. I know you all...
Deadline is, the deadline is March 10th, the process. So I believe next Tuesday after 28th. Um, so...
So, yes, I'd make the motion that we delay it one week.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion now to delay this item for one week. Ready for the vote on that?
One second. Man, uh, Counselor Moore, a second.
Yes.
Just give me a second here. Counselor Moore.
Close to the floor.
All right, that vote should be up.
Thank you very much. Item number 35 has been delayed for one week. Next item.
Uh, just communication-wise, it should be item 89. A notice from the city attorney pursuant to Division Section 2, that's 327D of the General Code of the City of Birmingham, is amended. Give you notice of the final judgment rendered in favor of the plan of the heat and rain on the construction of the city of Birmingham in the case of United States District Court of the Northern District of Alabama. Southern Division Case Number 220 CB 01270MHH in an amount of $186,528.56, which includes attorney fees and interest. It is in the intent of the Office of the City Attorney to satisfy said judgment. Fun to come from count number 128, 160053413.
Move the item.
Uh, just no action.
Just notice. All right, thank you. So we've been notified of that action. Thank you very much. Any other items, Mr. Clerk?
The speakers.
All right, thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think somebody had some UCs for the caption. We have to...
I'll go ahead and make those for him. I don't believe anybody else is gonna do that. If you're gonna do that, protein.
The, the resolutions...
At this time, councilors, you do have before you, on behalf of Counselor Woods, um, would like to ask for unanimous consent for a resolution for these two members of our community who recently passed away. The first is for Mr. Steven Vincent Serra, who was, uh, we offer profound sorrow and deep regret as passing of this resolution. He passed away on February 13th. And Mr. Serra was, um, a successful entrepreneur. He owned and operated automotive, automotive dealerships. He was respected nationally for his business acumen and accomplishments. And, um, these, most of his businesses were located in District One in Counselor Wood's office. Do we have to do them separately or can I do them together? All right, and the other, I'd like to offer unanimous consent for a, um, resolution of sympathy on the passing of Mr. Benny Andrews Jr. He was a pillar in the community and was an active engineer, electrical engineer in Birmingham community for more than 30 years. He was the owner of the Just Co Services Incorporated and served as president of that company for more than 27 years. Both of these individuals were very important to our community, and we just want to honor them and, um, recognize them and their families for the work they did in our communities. So I'm asking for unanimous consent. Second.
By saying aye, that's for UC for both items, and our motion to pass.
All right, councilors, and we'd like to offer a, a motion for these resolutions on behalf of Mr. Serra and Mr. Andrews.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, councilors. Those families will appreciate... Those families will appreciate that recognition, and we thank you for doing that on behalf of Councilor Woods. At this time, councilors, we'll entertain your comments regarding activities that are going on in your neighborhoods. And Councilor Clark, if you'll start.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start by also offering resolutions of sympathy. The first one is for the, for LeBoiz Daru. He is the son of longtime Birmingham businesswoman and Bush Hills resident Gwendy Daru, and that family has certainly seen its share of troubles of late. They dealt with a whole house fire and lost everything last year, and he was recently found by Public Works, actually, at that home. So just want to send prayers and sympathy to that family. If I can get a motion, motion for UC for a resolution of sympathy for that family.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And I want to also, oh, I'm sorry, move the resolution.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And secondly, several Enslie Highlands residents are present today, and if they would just kind of show your hands, welcome. And I know you were here on another matter that the deceased, Mr. Wayne Wilson, cared deeply about. And he passed on Sunday, on his birthday. And he was such a joy to work with, and I know everyone will certainly miss him. But I wanted to also offer a resolution for, of sympathy to his family. And we'll actually prepare a resolution once we have more information, and have it entered into the permanent record for the City of Birmingham. So this is just kind of a space filler resolution for now. Secretary Mallory and I will be working on that later this week. But Wayne was just sworn in as the president of Enslie Highlands after serving for a really long time in various roles of neighborhood leadership. And he was a passionate defender and supporter of his neighborhood, and will certainly be greatly missed. The funeral's gonna take place on Saturday, February 25th, at noon at Mount Zion Baptist Church in Brighton. That's 5035 McLean Street in Brighton. And there is a viewing from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Friday, Integrity Funeral Home off Brook Lane. So I'd like to ask for UC for a resol, uh, UC.
Second.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And move the resolution.
Second.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you.
Madam President, I just want to add to Councilor Clark's comments. It's actually really sad, the passing of Mr. Wilson. He's actually a really, really good guy. And when we say literally, he had just been sworn in, literally, he's just been sworn in. Spoke with his wife last week, and I spoke with her again yesterday, and they've been married 50 years.
Oh, wow.
And she also let me know his transition was also on his birthday. And so we are extremely grateful. He's no longer suffering in pain, but he will truly miss, not just by his wife and the residents of Enslie Highlands, but by the City of Birmingham. So thank you, Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to make a few more announcements quickly, the Enslie neighborhood, wait a minute. Oh, yeah, that is Enslie neighborhood. Will meet Thursday, February 23rd, at 6:00 p.m. at the MacAlpine Recreation Center. This is the rescheduled date, because the weather was uncooperative last Thursday, so please remember to wear a mask if you plan to come in person. Also note that State Representative Wondellin Givhan is hosting a town hall about the status of Birmingham Southern College this Thursday, February 16th, from 6:00, at, from 6:00 p.m. at A.H. Parker High School. Please attend to understand more about this important issue. I was under the impression this meeting was tonight. Do you all know, happen to know?
I know, it got canceled last week, great.
Not sure.
Yeah, so I was thinking it was tonight at 6:00, but my notes say it's Thursday at 6:00. So just look on the web and see when it really is. If you're up for a brisk walk, come out to the Starbucks at Crossplex and join your neighbors for a morning walk. Each Thursday, we meet up about five minutes before 8:00 to do a 1.25 mile loop, and all paces are welcome. And don't forget, because I'm gonna be like a broken record, that the Birmingham Parks and Recreation Department is looking for lifeguards. Applications open on January 9th and will close on May 12th. You must be at least 16 years of age, but there's no maximum age. And they will train you if you're not certified. If you have any questions or interests, please contact Terry Sewell Harris at 205-254-2189. And I just want to say happy Mardi Gras day to everyone. It's Fat Tuesday. If you really want to amp up the good times and eat, drink, and be merry, you can join us this evening at Boutwell Auditorium for the Mardi Gras Fat Tuesday Extravaganza, starting at 7:00 p.m. Admission is free, but you must be 21 years of age to enter. And after all that partying, don't forget that Wednesday start, tomorrow starts the Lenten season, where we do our inner preparation to really up our personal game with some self-discipline. So, thank you. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Councilor, Councilor Quinn had a question.
You may have said this, you may have said this, but is the, is Representative Givhan's town hall at Parker High School?
It is.
Okay.
And I'll see if I can get the correct date.
Because they said it was listed on the TV stations, or the media said tonight.
It's tonight.
I see the media in the back. When is it, John?
Did I recognize you?
The new date, the new date is tonight at 6:00 p.m., not Thursday.
Okay.
So it is tonight, okay.
Secondly.
Go ahead. Get back to mommy.
Regarding the pools, so just based on my experience in the past, I'm asking because I don't want us to get in this situation again. In the past, you know, we get right up to the summer, and we figure out pools XYZ, EFG, HIJK have issues, and they cannot be opened because they're in need of repairs. I mean, maybe this is a question for the administration, but in addition to having lifeguards, are we in parallel also making sure that the facilities are in good working order?
Council Clark?
I will ask at my park board meeting and let you know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Is that it on your announcement, Councilor?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry for just being so disruptive during your meeting.
That's okay. It's Fat Tuesday.
Yeah.
Our meeting.
I also would like to, to ask for UC for a resolution of sympathy for Keith Harrison, who was a friend to many of our city employees, I guess myself included, who is loved by so many people in Birmingham, and his wife Roz, and his daughter India, who you all know, who, who works with me and does such an awesome job. So motion for UC on that resolution of sympathy.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And then motion on the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for that. I appreciate it very much. Commercial Development Authority has two board vacancies that we first announced last week. Interested candidates will need to send their resume to india.bailey@birminghamal.gov by this Tuesday, February 28th. The only requirement is that they are a citizen of the City of Birmingham for that. Creston Neighborhood will be meeting Thursday, February 23rd, at 6:00 o'clock. Crestwood South will be meeting Monday, February 27th, at 6:30 at the Crestwood Tavern. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. South Pratt Neighborhood will meet tonight at 6:00 p.m. at Library Hope Baptist Church, located at 903 Corti. Sandusky Neighborhood will meet tonight, 6:00 p.m. They will have a conference call. The number is 319-527-9642. Evergreen Neighborhood will meet tonight at 6:00 p.m. They'll meet in person at the Evergreen Community Center, located at 1867 16th Street North. Smithville Estates Neighborhood will meet tonight at 6:00 p.m. Also by conference call. The call-in number is 605-472-5447. The access code is 558467. Inon Ridge Neighborhood will meet Thursday, February 23rd, and they will meet on Zoom. You can contact the office for that information. My last final announcement, Madam President, is the next public safety meeting will be Tuesday, February 28th, at 1:00 p.m. You can submit your agenda items to Brandon McCray. No later than Thursday, February 23rd, by 1:00 p.m. Happy Mardi Gras, Fat Tuesday. See you all.
Thank you. Councilor Moore?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Neighborhood Association meeting is taking place this week. We have Southwood Lawn Neighborhood Association that's taking place today at 6:00 p.m. Hammond Park will be Thursday at 4:30 p.m. And Kingston will be Monday at 6:00 p.m. You can go to birminghamalcitycouncil.org on the District 4 page and find all the detailed information concerning those meetings. There are currently three positions that are available on the Birmingham Library Board. We have, like I said, three positions. You can apply for those positions at birminghamal.gov backslash boards and agencies. VLB, Volunteer Lawyers Birmingham, will be hosting an expungement clinic on February 24th at 10:00 a.m. If there's anybody that, you know, is in need of expungement of different things that are on their records, please make sure that you call 205-250-5198. Again, that number is 205-250-5198. I guess in the spirit of Black History Month, we're really trying to, VLB is really trying to encourage those who receive things on their record from being a part of the Civil Rights. If you were, you know, somebody that, you know, has a longstanding infringement on your record, you know, from being a part of, you know, the children's marches or things of that nature, they definitely want to encourage you to give them a call and to apply. And then the last thing that I wanted to say is, I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor. This weekend, I had an opportunity to witness, well, this past weekend, I had an opportunity to witness one thing that, you know, really made my heart smile, and that was the demolition of a building that had been in Norwood neighborhood for quite some time, dilapidated, burned down. A lot of the residents had, you know, really been, you know, upset about it because it was just an eyesore to the community. And so was glad to see that that was able to come down. And then also got an opportunity to go over to Collegeville on yesterday, and talk to some, some really good guys with Public Works, who were clearing out a ditch that was longstanding in the neighborhood. Residents will tell you for the past four, three to four decades, this ditch has been the cause of a lot of flooding that has taken place in the Collegeville neighborhood. And to be able to see, you know, that, you know, it was not only being cleared out, but there are plans to put this on the Capitol project, so that it could be something that is really resolved, did my heart good. I also just want to go back and, you know, talk about those guys with Public Works. They are doing an awesome, awesome job. I don't know if we say it enough, but, you know, the, the amount of workload that they have, and, you know, the things that they have to deal with, we as residents need to be way more appreciative of the work that they do, and, you know, the service that they provide to us. Small things we can do to help them, not putting leaves in the ditches, right? Not putting, you know, grass, grass clippings and, you know, tree limbs. All of those things need to be as far away from our, our ditches, our roads, all of that type of stuff. Bag it up, we'll have somebody to come and pick it up. But that will help us in the long run not to have to deal with so much flooding that takes place in our city. And dropping trash, of course, we already know that's supposed to go in the trash can, it's supposed to be bagged up, and it's supposed to be in our brand-new handy-dandy trash can. So I just wanted to say again, thank you to the mayor and his team. Thank you to Public Works, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilor Moore. And I do want to thank you for mentioning the work that's done in Public Works, and what we as residents can do to eliminate or alleviate some of the problems that we often complain about. Clearly, by us, by residents who don't bag those leaves, or they leave items, they do create not only potential flooding issues, but dumping. I had a neighbor to complain that someone had dumped trash into her pile of leaves. And so this is just a reminder, those pile of leaves should have been bagged, and then it would not have promoted for, and we think we've got a contractor out there that you are dumping, when you leave your items, where you repair the house, and you leave those for us to pick up, you are committing a code violation. So thank you very much. Thank you. Council Abbott?
Well, the people who left the pile of construction materials when they left, they didn't get a permit from the city anyway, so nobody will catch them.
Thank you.
That's how that works. The Planning and Zoning Committee will meet tomorrow, Wednesday, February 22nd, at 3:30 p.m. in the council chambers. Neighborhood meetings, tonight, we have Redmont Neighborhood actually meeting physically at the Botanical Gardens. Again, I think this might be their first physical meeting in many moons. It's at 5:00 p.m. this afternoon. And at 6:00 p.m., Five Point South Neighborhood meets at the Highlands United Methodist Church Social Hall on the ground level. If people have concerns or issues, whether it be a pothole, or your neighbor's doing construction without a permit, or they're dumping leaves without bagging them, you know, all those kind of things, you can call 311. But an even better thing to do is to download the MyBeHamm311 app, so that you can include photographs, which makes it a lot easier for Public Works or whoever is coming to find your concern. The app is free at the Play Store or the Apple Store, depending on the kind of phone you have. And as always, we ask that residents of District 3 visit our website for updates and information that we can't possibly announce at a city council meeting, and that's at www.behamdistrict3.com. Thank you very much. Oh, and we do have, this is the second announcement, we have two upcoming vacancies on the Design Review Board, and so if people are interested in design review, they need to send their resume to our office.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. Thank you. Dr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. An additional tool in relating to permitting that you can use is our Birmingham GIS Mapping webpage. So we often, I just recently got contacted by a resident that was inquiring as to whether or not a property owner in their neighborhood had permit, a permit for work that was being done. And you can find that out yourself. The information is publicly available on the GIS mapping site. You just, you know, zoom into the parcel, click on it, and it'll have a list of all of the permits that have been, you know, granted for, for that piece of property. So you just look at the latest one, and, you know, it'll tell you what, whether or not they have one. Number one, I don't know, you know, the timing of when that information gets updated, but, you know, if it's on the GIS mapping site, you can, you can see it. That's on the public-facing side, so it's public information. I also feel really strong that if you're an engaged citizen, the GIS mapping page is is a tool that you ought to get very familiar with. It can be very handy.
I didn't know it was kept up to date, so great. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Central City Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at 6:00 p.m. at the Birmingham Central Library. Fountain Heights will have a meeting with UAB Live Health Smart at the Fountain Heights Rec Center tonight. And I believe that meeting is also at 6:00 p.m. The Live Health Smart Initiative is part of UAB's grand challenge that addresses community health and really, they coordinate the community with other area stakeholders and use their, you know, intellectual talent and resources towards addressing community health in various neighborhoods around the city. So, again, they're meeting in Fountain Heights tonight at the Fountain Heights Rec Center, and I believe the time is 6:00 p.m. Finally, Jones Valley Teaching Farm has a Good Community Food Fellowship that is now accepting applications until March 17th. The Community Food Fellowship is an initiative designed to strengthen the local food system in Birmingham by providing exceptional training opportunity for urban growers. Over the course of 10 months, community food fellows will attend a series of learning opportunities led by local farmers and chefs. Fellows will also deepen their practice by applying what they learn in the management of individual community garden beds at the Center for Food Education. Individuals who complete the fellowship will be eligible to apply for assistance in establishing new community garden sites of their own. For the application link, please reach out to Jessica, the Jones Valley Teaching Farm Senior Farm Manager, at community@jvtf.org, or call (205) 453-7268. Thank you, and that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Counselor Quinn. Madam Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam President. As far as neighborhood meetings, we have the Five Point South Neighborhood Meeting tonight at 6:00 p.m. in the South Hall of Highland United Methodist Church. Next Monday, February 27th at 6:00 p.m. via Zoom, Woodland Park will meet, and you can find that information for Woodland Park on my website. The next Budget and Finance meeting will meet this Monday, February 27th at 3:30 p.m. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. Email submissions to Laquita Wilson and Ethan Harris. For community events, we are having our second annual, was it, You Speak, a celebration of Black History, and so that will be this Friday at 9:30 a.m. It will last for about 90 minutes, so it's free to the public, featuring Birmingham City Schools Poetry Out Loud winners, Ramsey High School Theater and Dance, Holy Family Theater, Carver High School Orchestra, Carver High School, and Hudson-K38 Combined Choir, and Huffman Middle School Theater Program. So please make plans to attend and support our students. Secondly, having a Community Engagement Forum and Resource Fair hosted by the Arthur Williams Program, which is, was founded by some Tissfield residents and myself. That will be this Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00 at Holy Family. We'll have speakers and representatives from the Birmingham Black Nurses, Community Care Development Network, TDC, Jefferson County Family Resource Center, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. We'll have an attorney there, YWCA, Humana Health Insurance, Alabama State, and our Birmingham Public Libraries as well. And we will have free snacks and drinks. Also, the Junior League Friday night at 6:00 p.m., we will be screening the Hidden Figures movie and having a talk afterwards. We will have food by Say Cheese Birmingham and from Nali, but nice popcorn. And then lastly, the Birmingham Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta will be having their Matters of the Heart Education Seminar, Lifestyle Changes for Life, and this will be at the Tissfield Senior Center, that is next Tuesday, I think it's at 10:30 p.m. And the address for that is 401 Omega Street, and that's Birmingham, Alabama, 35205, and it's open to the public, to senior citizens. And lastly, the Tissfield Branch Library will have an African-American Read-In and Gospel event. They will be hosting the Miles Gospel Choir. I actually heard them on Sunday at Sixth Avenue. Once Senator Warnock was there, they were actually excellent. And the African-American Authors from the community of Tissfield, it will be this Monday, February 27th at 4:00 p.m. Also, sending a prayer up for the Ramsey Rams Boys Basketball Team. They are currently playing at Waller State, so we're hoping for a victory so they can come home. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. Here are the announcements for District 7. This week, we do have bulk trash pickup scheduled for Grisella Heights, East Brownsville, and the Roosevelt Neighborhoods. This evening, the Green Acres Neighborhood will meet at Lifting Christ Worship Center. That's at 6:30 p.m. on Pineview Road. Want to thank those volunteers and staff who did come out this past Saturday and assist with the cleanup there in the Green Acres Neighborhood. Just want to let you know that we are planning monthly cleanups in District 7. We'll be sure to get the word out to those neighborhoods as they're being planned, and please watch our District 7 social media pages, as well as the city council's social media pages, so that you'll be aware when those cleanups are being held. It's great to have volunteers and staff, but we'd also like to see neighbors come out and assist with those cleanups in their neighborhoods. Wednesday, the Poudley Branch Library will present its faces African Mask Making at 3:00 p.m. This is part of the Birmingham Public Library's Black History Month programs. And at the Poudley Branch on Wednesday, artist Kimmy Cantrell, who's a contemporary artist from Atlanta, will be making African masks. This program is for adults, and so join us and make your own African mask and learn about the significance of these masks. On Thursday, the Industrial Center Neighborhood Association will meet at the Mary Door Center at 6:00 p.m. And the Administration Committee is scheduled to meet in the council chambers on Tuesday, February 28th at 2:00 p.m. Has been reminded already, if you miss a pickup, please dial (254) 6312, or the D7 hotline at (205) 304-1797. But I can't encourage you enough to download the My Beham 311 app. And that is, again, as been mentioned already, a great resource for providing information to Public Works and other departments about issues and concerns. Thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Clark, if you will call the speakers list?
Sandy Bergeron? Sandy Bergeron?
Burgess, huh?
She's gone.
She's gone.
Okay. Tammy Smith?
Morning, Ms. Smith.
My normal concern. Happy New Year. I don't think I have saw any of you. I'm here about some major issues with the streets, and I give the pictures to Ms. Alice when I get from over here. But what I would like to know for the Cypco Finley Area is where are we at on the paving, like the streets over there, like the paving cycle? When we be back on, because it hasn't been a street paved over there in quite a few years. But they're in pretty bad shape, and I know it's a cycle where you get to certain streets, and I was just wondering. Because my neighbors often ask me, because I took it upon myself on a four-block perimeter to take care of those blocks, and most of them, it's like 80-year-old people, 70-year-olds, so I pick up around the area. But the streets are really bad to the point that they're so dangerous that if you hit them, it's going to knock you in the other lane. So I give that to Ms. Alice, because I did bring pictures. But I know at some point it needs to be paved completely, and I was just wondering, will we be in there this year, or we there next year? Do you, anybody have an idea of that cycle for the Cypco Finley Area paving?
We could answer your, I was going to let you finish, so it wouldn't take up your time, but...
Yes, ma'am.
You can go to the Birmingham City website, and you go to www.birminghamal.gov/neighborhoods, or you can go to the Transportation Department, and you will see those listed by district. So you'll be able to look for your district, and you'll be able to see that complete paving list. I believe we have over 200 segments of streets that are scheduled to be paved for this year, and then there's rent a five-year plan. So check that website out.
Okay. With that, being that there are areas that's so dangerous, and they hadn't got to them that far, so is it possible they will make some exceptions and maybe come out and do at least those areas of the cause?
That's why I'm going to ask you to communicate with the counselor, as well as the Department of Transportation, because we are in a five-year phase of paving streets. But I do know the Department of Transportation, they look and they go back and assess the quality of those roads, even if they're listed for paving. I feel like I'm speaking for administration, but I know that's information we've been sharing with residents. So there is the opportunity to have that dialogue, and then I know in some cases, Department of Transportation can look at those roads and look at those, but I'm going to let you just, we'll transfer that over to administration for follow-up, as well as your council office. But I know your streets are listed for what's coming up for this segment, okay? And I don't want to take up your time. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other speakers? All right, thank you. We do want to thank, they were not listed, yes. We do want to thank Officers Cedric Pinkert, Andrew Carrington, and Morris Garner for their duty today during council meeting. And counselors, at this time, will entertain a motion.
Don't steal your turn.
No, mine.
Aye. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.